Going live now then, Simon. Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this meeting of the Planning Committee. We've got apologies tonight from councillors Page and Devine. Otherwise, everyone here is here. This, there's a link to a live stream of the meeting on the council's website and a recording will be available after the meeting. And we're currently limited to a single camera, so all public speakers will be off camera when they address the committee. That's the people that are here in person, of course. Several officers will also join us via the screen from home. And other than that, I don't think I need to make any more initial announcements. So shall we crack on? First of all, minutes of the meeting last month, is everybody happy they're a correct record? Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest? Councilor Challenger.
Thank you Chair, just under the appeals item, I work for one of the appealants on case number 191499, thanks.
And councillor Emberson.
Yeah, I'll be abstaining on item 11 on the basis I'm the lead councillor for housing.
For the committee, Richard Etoff to just say a word about this, thank you.
Yes, just to update you Chair, we intend that there's to be a member site visit to 18 Parkside Road, application 210582 on the 25th of November, that would be a councillor accompanied site visit please Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else has got anything else they wanted to ask about site visits? Councillor Ennis.
A question of advice, I'm going to try and make it, but if I can't do to work, it's not advisable for me to go out there in my own time, is it? Or is it?
From the perspective of just looking from the street, that would be fine, I would have thought councillor, councillor Ennis, subject to all health and safety precautions, obviously. But the committee, if the committee was interested in looking from other properties, which has happened before, then we should probably know now if we need to make arrangements, please.
Thank you for that. You move on to item, oh sorry councillor Rowland.
Sorry Chair, yes, just in terms of that 18 Parkside Road and seeing the, seeing the site from other properties, I was on the visit last year and I felt, I felt that that was valuable.
Okay, we'll pass that back to the case officer to try and arrange then Chair.
Okay. Right, thank you, moving on then to applications for prior approval on page 23.
Nothing to add Chair.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Councillor Challenger.
Thank you Chair, thank you Julie and Richard for this really thorough and interesting report on something. It's obviously really disappointing on the section 10.1, the financial implications to see such a huge sum of money that's been lost due to, you know, the prior approval that is sadly out of our control. And it's glad to see that a Labour run council is sort of taking what power it can do with this terrible Conservative planning that's in place and trying to, you know, invest and take money back into the town that we all call home. But thank you for the report.
Anybody else? No, shall we note that, and I apologize, I've missed out planning appeals on page 19. Is there anything to add to that?
Not from officers Chair.
Anybody got any comment on that report? Just note that then, thank you. And then we get on to the performance monitoring report on page 29 and Julie Williams is going to talk from home on that one. Good evening Julie.
Good evening Chair, good evening councillors and members of the public. Yeah, so this is a report giving you information on the last two quarters of this year. So from April up to the end of October, on our performance, dealing with plan applications and other information. As you can see from the tables, we are performing quite well on dealing with applications within the required timescales. The report does also show that we have had an increase in applications, but there's been a drop in fee when compared to previous year. And my analysis suggests that that is due to the increase in smaller applications, that bringing a lower fee. So that's sort of has had an effect on our overall fee income. I would just like to say also at the start of the report, I bring to your attention that we are launching, bringing out a new pre-application form. I said in the report that it will be in a system easier to use on our website, that's still taking place. Our team that look after the website are trying to design it so it's more of a, one of these up to date forms that you can fill in and it takes you on to the next page automatically, rather than at the moment it's an old converted PDF form, so we're looking to get that changed by the end of this year, I'm told. And also bring to attention that we are about to also have a new validation checklist on the website, which again brings the old document up to date with new policies and current guidance available, with handy links for the applicant to find that. And the response to our consultations on that was very good. So hopefully that will be launched when I get around to doing it by the end of this month for sure. But that's, that's the intention for that. So thank you Chair, that's my presentation on that report, thank you.
Has anyone got questions or comments councillor Williams?
Thank you very much Chair, briefly thanks from my perspective, a committee perspective and Ward councillor, the planning team are doing an astonishing amount of hard work, so thank you to the whole team. And a quick question if I may, it's great that a new validation checklist is coming down the track and will be ready soon. Will that include guidance on biodiversity? Last time I asked, which was a long time ago, but there was a lack of guidance both at a local and national level on exactly which developments would need to provide things like a net gain calculation, that kind of thing, and exactly how that calculation would be formatted. So I wondered if that was included now.
Yes, thank you Chair, yeah, yes, it is included, we have, because we have now the new policies in place. So that's why some of the, the guidance on the information required has been expanded to include reference to those policies and, and the current thinking in terms of biodiversity, also in sustainable development, that sort of thing. As soon as I've got it in a final form, I'm happy to share round with you all the, the documents. So you can see, I just didn't attach it to this one because it's, it's too long, I think, to be appended to a document like this. But I'm happy to share it with you, so you can see what we've, what we are asking applicants to do at, when they submit their planning applications. Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else, so let's, can I just add my thanks to you all as well? It's been a really difficult period for everybody as we know, but you've kept the show on the road and it's, it's sometimes been quite challenging, I know, but thank you to, if you could pass that back to the whole team as well. So I know just how much pressure you've all been under.
Thank you very much indeed.
Takes us on, if we could note that takes us on to item 8, the proposed felling of a tree in West Frearn in Parkside Road.
Good evening. Thank you Chair, I hope you can hear me okay. So on the 6th of September, we received an application from the council's tree officer in Palacks, seeking consent to felled the protected pine tree at West Frearn. Town and Country Planning Act requires applications for works to council owned or maintain trees to be sited at a committee of the council that is not responsible for managing land on which the tree stands. It also requires a public notice to be displayed for 21 days, giving details of the proposed works. So we erected two site notices on the 19th of October, one on the tree and one on the lamp post outside West Frearn. So that period ends on the 9th of November. As explained in 4.4 of the report, a report's not normally brought to committee until the end of that 21 day period so that we can confirm if any objections or comments have been received. However, in this case, it would mean consideration not until committee on the 1st of December. There is some degree of urgency due to the current risk the tree and the wall present, hence bringing the matter to committee earlier than all and seeking a delegated authority to consider the comments received and approve the felling application if that's the conclusion reached. And for information, we've not received any comments yet. The reasons for felling are given in section 5 of the report, along with the potential replacement planting details. Officers have inspected the tree and the wall and the works are, proposed are considered to be reasonable to manage the risk presented by the tree and to allow unnecessary repairs of the damaged wall, current state of which presents a risk to users of the YMCA next door. Therefore recommended that the works be approved, subject to no substantive objections being received. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Emberson.
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to say, you know, it's always regrettable to lose any tree in the borough, but it's clear that officers have done the due diligence required and it's clearly needed to make sure that the YMCA and surrounding residents are protected. And I'm pleased to note the commitment via condition to replant another tree and make sure that we follow our commitment to the environment in terms of ensuring that any tree lost is replaced. So given this is my patch, I'm pleased to proceed on the basis outlined in the report. And thanks to the officers for dealing with it promptly and liaising to make sure that there is a condition in place. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else, so yeah, I think as councillor Emberson says, it's really sad to see a tree go, but this is one that's just got too dangerous and hope the public will understand when it's actually taken down, why it's been taken down. And we can reassure people that we will be replacing it as well. So thank you for the work and speedy work on that, thank you. Can we agree to the recommendation? All those, thank you. Which takes us on to the planning applications for tonight, the first of which is item 9, which is 27 St George's Terrace. And we have, after the case officer's just introduced it, we have public speaking from both neighbour and from the applicant's agent. So over to Tom Hughes to just introduce the report, thank you.
Thank you Chair, so this application is full planning permission for single story front and rear extensions to the commercial premises located at the ground floor. Important to note, when considering the application, the site topography, which slopes to the rear of the site and that the site is also set on a slightly higher ground level than the adjoining property at number 29. The rear extension is what raised issues during the course of the application and this has been amended twice with reductions to depth, height, roof form and also the introduction of obscure glazing to the side wood elevation. This was to mitigate harm that was identified by officers in terms of loss of privacy, of visual dominance and an overbearing effect that would have been caused to the adjoining neighbour at number 29. In addition, I received a further amended plan last night, which is the same as the one that you can see, but just illustrates guttering and rainwater goods on the rear extension contained within the site curtilage. And I've included an extract which you should be able to see on the slides in front of you. The neighbour at number 29 has also supplied site photographs from their property, which you should also be able to see.
Sorry, can I just stop, we haven't got the slides up on the screen, is? All we can see is you, but.
Okay.
Tom, can you press share please to, to share the PowerPoint so we can all see it please?
Yeah, just a moment.
Thank you.
Okay, so should be able to see a slideshow?
No, we can't.
Yeah, okay, we're there Tom.
Okay, so you got that now?
Yes.
Alright, okay, great. Okay.
Nothing at all now.
Can you see any slides now?
No.
Blank screen I'm afraid, Tom, we, we did have your PowerPoint, that's it, that's it.
Okay, right, I'll just exit out of full screen mode then, so hopefully you can see that then. So this, so as I was saying, the, this is an extract of the further received this morning, which shows the guttering on the rear extension there. Also received were photographs from the neighbour and they can be seen on that slide and then also on this slide here. Okay, so officers basically consider that the amendments have sufficiently addressed the identified harm to the residential amenities in number 29 and that a level of harm sufficient warrant a reason for refusal of the application is now not reached, subject to a condition requiring the installation and ongoing provision of obscure glazing to the rear extension. The recommendation is to grant planning permission.
Thank you councillor Rowland.
Thank you Chair, I'm sorry to bother you, but there's a block up there that someone's being called. One of the planning officers that is causing us an inability to see the photograph on the right. Do you, you see that? So yeah, there, thank you, okay, we couldn't, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, could, these photos are quite small, I'm just wondering if we go back and then Richard says he's going to point out the, the points that Tom was making.
Yes, through you Chair, Tom, that's it, the amended plan, but should I just point out the internal gutter?
Sure.
Tom, that's the amended plan received today, was it?
Yes, that's right, so it's this, it's, it just illustrates guttering on the rear extension.
Okay, can I just clarify, so that's come off the boundary, I can't actually see the gutter on there. So have they brought it off the boundary slightly to enable the gutter to be on, on the, accommodated on the applicant's side only, is that what that's showing?
Yeah, so it's, it's very, very, very marginal, but essentially all, the entirety of development, including rainwater goods is within the curtilage of the application site.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Lang, you were indicating.
Yeah, thank you Chair, it's just on the proposed rear elevation, the, the vertical lines going through the height elevation, the measurement. Could I, my eyes are bad as well, so could we just tell me what that measurement is please?
So the total height there from the, from the resultant ground level is just over 2.6 metres.
2.6, is that to get over at the door at the back? That goes into the, into the, into the house, because obviously standard would be 2.4.
So the, the existing ground level would be lowered by sort of internal arrangement to sort of step down into the extension.
Okay. And that's, that's, obviously that's sloped, yeah, coming towards the back. So that's still 2.6 at the back and obviously higher going towards the existing building.
So the, the ground level itself, the existing ground level would be lowered to accommodate the, the extension. And so that that measurement is taken from the, sort of the end of the, of the extension.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying.
Yes, because we'll come on to our debate when we've heard the public speaking.
Thank you Chair, and if we could move on quickly just to the next slide. Now, the bottom right picture shows the view from the neighbour across. Would it be possible to give us a rough indication of where the extension would come to? I suspect you're going to need someone to stand there.
So it's, it's, it's just over two metres in depth. So, I mean, on the bottom right photograph there, sort of approximately to the, to the line of the, the door opening.
So roughly where the fence finishes, maybe just a shade to the left of it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, we'll probably have more questions later, but can I then ask Sheena MacKay to, to join us while she's on, hopefully she's still on the, on the phone to, to speak to the committee. You have up to five minutes and, and the applicant will also get five minutes. So over to you when you're ready.
Star six to unmute.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, okay, I'm the owner and occupier of the neighbouring property number 29. I've objected to, due to concerns over the rear, rear extension. Whilst I can see the revised plans have taken steps to reduce the impact on, on my property, the, the thing that they can't change is the proximity of the proposed extension to the actual property. So it's only going to be about 30 centimetres from the window on the adjacent, adjacent wall and less than a metre and a half from the window and the door on the facing wall. So, you know, very close, which does, even with the steps, create and then, you know, a sense of enclosure sort of overlooking and potentially loss of privacy. The fact that number 27 is on a higher level and with the direction that the property's face means that in terms of the sort of impact of natural light, it will then, it will still have an impact in terms of reducing the actual natural light to my property on these, in these rooms. And with the proximity, the potential for increased noise and disturbance is still there. I am a bit concerned about the proposal to excavate to reduce the ground level because it doesn't state how deep this will be and with the natural sloping land, there is a potential for the excavation to be below the foundations for the existing boundary wall, which of course would have an impact on that. I had been concerned about, you know, the potential for water damage. I hadn't seen the revised plan that's received this morning and having, because there's a delay on the link, hadn't seen that. And I'm pleased to hear that there have been changes made in terms of looking at the guttering and I'll be interested to have a look at that because I was concerned about the potential for encroaching. Overall, based on that, keeping this short, I do feel that it still would have a significant detrimental effect on my property and hence on me, and so my objection stands. So I'd just like to say again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and taking the time to listen.
Thank you very much, I just see if the committee have got any questions, anybody got any questions? Councillor Rowland?
Yes, I was just wondering, was there any offer to get you the revised plans? And how would you have been able to see them, would you have been able to be emailed them this afternoon to review those or?
There wasn't, I did check on the website prior to just coming on the call to make sure that I hadn't seen anything and I couldn't see anything there.
Any other, any other questions councillor Ennis?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for your, for your, your contribution. I think it's a pity, isn't it, that you haven't been able to, for whatever reason, you know, life is life, isn't it, but it's a pity because it might reassure you more. Do you think that would be the case or, or are you just generally really unhappy with the extension built even with the improvised changes, which seems to have, you know, passed the positivity from the council?
I think it, it would certainly mitigate one of the concerns, so there is on that. Unfortunately, it doesn't take away the proximity concern and the impact that has. So I would say it would help, it helps, but it doesn't take away the objection.
Not seeing anybody else indicating, so thank you very much for joining us, please do stay on the line and we've, we've also got the applicant's agent, Albert Daja, who's online as, on the line as well to now speak for up to five minutes. So welcome to Albert. Are you still there, yes?
Star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, we can.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd just like to mention that I just had the lady from 29 speak and I completely understand your concern. But unfortunately, my clients, essentially they want to expand the business and they want to do this by opening up what is currently storage space at the front of the, the commercial shop. And in order to expand into the storage space, they, they, they need some place to put the new storage and hence why the, the conservatory has been proposed. And it's absolutely detrimental to their, to their business to have that storage space. There will be absolutely no overlooking, nobody's going to be lingering around because obviously it's, it's a small space. It won't generally be used for socializing or anything longer than picking up products and putting them back into, into the commercial space. So in that sense, I think it's, it's very, very important to them. It's been over a year since we put the application and for whatever reason, we haven't been able to get to this point up until now. And they're still very adamant that they, they, they want that extension because it's very important for their business and moving forward. So can you still hear me? Hello?
Hello, yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, I thought that cut off. So I, I think we, we, what I was trying to say essentially is that they have met all the concerns addressed by the, the planning officers and the neighbours. So I, I, I don't see a reason why they can't move forward and, and have their extension and expand their business, which would be very, very important to them.
Thank you, is that all you wanted to say?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, I'll just, if you just stay on the line while I see if there are any questions. Thank you. I'll just if you just stay on the line while I see if there are any questions from committee members. councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Chair, and and thank you for coming to speak this evening. Um, I noticed that what you're proposing to replace is a kind of it looks like a kind of plastic roof that has been just kind of put up there. And I I was kind of wanting to know the age, the condition, and how opaque that is, how dirty that is, or what kind of limitations of light that that currently is possibly causing for the resident. And I'm asking that because what you're proposing is a glass kind of conservatory look that is obviously much more permanent and neater. And you're talking about a pitched glass roof and a frosted glass. I'm asking in terms of the how that will be kept. Will that allow better lighting, in your opinion? What kind of materials are they going to be used? That that type of thing. And then also, you're talking about this area in terms of storage. Are you going to be storing cardboard boxes right up to the top and thus reducing the light? Or what kind of level of storage is going to be used in that area? I'm asking because you are building right literally up to the line of the neighbour. And she is, I I think there's concerns about encroachment, kind of feeling hemmed in. So whilst you're proposing a glass roof and and glass windows, I'm concerned that that's going to be allowed to actually function like that. In other words, we're not going to have boxes stored up to the ceiling. We're not going to have a glass roof that three years from now is going to be covered in grey muck that's never cleaned and about the quality of materials and things like that. So if you could just address that for me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry, you'll have to unmute again. I star six.
Hello.
I think at the moment, sorry.
Sorry, no, I was just checking. You were unmuted. It's fine. Thank you.
So at the moment, there is a temporary structure there. And it isn't a pitched roof, so hence why I think all the dirt has been trapped. And obviously, because they plan on taking it down, they haven't really maintained it. But with the pitch roof, I don't think it will hold as much dirt because obviously it will slide off. In terms of maintaining it, to be honest, I I don't I don't know. That will be up to my client. Um, what I've seen in terms of storage as well, I I'm not sure because but what I've seen from the the current storage room, there are cardboard boxes, but nothing is stacked up. It's every they mainly need easy access to it. It's it's not, I guess, it's not high shelving where they that will go up all the way to the ceiling. It's just what I saw currently was just a few boxes on the floor and 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 they need constant access to it. So it's nothing permanent, I guess. It's just um from what I saw at least. I I'm not sure in that sense.
Councillor Rowland, you come back on that?
Yes, it looks like a hip roof, so there will be a flat section on the top too. So it's not just. And if so, how would that be taken care of?
Sorry, am I?
Maybe I didn't make myself clear. It looks like a hip roof, so you'll have a flat section and then you'll have an angle. This isn't just a 45 degree lean-to type of of roof. It's flat with an angle. So I I'm just concerned about about dirt getting trapped, about the accessibility to actually clean that. And if, you know, I'm thinking about the amenity of the neighbour and that ability to have that that kind of light coming through there. So there would there be a possibility of of changing that roof line and so that you've got something at an angle or?
Hello, are you still there?
Hello.
Hello. Did you get that question okay from about the roof?
Yeah, so, sorry, I I thought I was unmuted. What I was saying was that it's very important for my for my clients to have the the storage is detrimental to their to their business. So I'm sure they would be happy to to change the roof so that nothing could get stuck up there, I guess, and it could be washed away with rain at least if maintaining it would be difficult.
Thank you.
But councillor Ennis, I think you were indicating.
Thank you. I don't want to prolong it too much, but can I just ask about a dialogue with the neighbour? Has there been much dialogue with the neighbour from yourselves regarding this? And is there any reassurance you can give your neighbour about their concerns that they've raised tonight?
Um, so in terms of the foundations, I have spoken to the builder who is happy to do the works and he is a professional. I've I've seen his work. And he will do the work properly. I don't any 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 concerns with foundations, I guess, while the work is going on. The neighbour can come along, she can have a look. Everything can be explained to her so that everything is kind of open. In terms of gaining dialogue with her, like I said, the planning application was put through a year ago. And for whatever reason, delays with 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 the council, I I'm not sure why it's been delayed this long, but we weren't sure what was happening with the with the extension. So hence why we we haven't really had much dialogue with the neighbour.
Right. Any more questions? No. Thank you very much for coming and speaking to us and answering the questions. And please do stay on the line to hear what we have to say. I wonder if the case officer wanted to respond to any of that before I throw open to the committee?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the comments by the neighbour, as I said in my reports, I think harm was identified initially with the rear extension. And then through two amendments, we considered those that that harm has been sufficiently mitigated. And so there wouldn't be harm sufficient to constitute a reason for refusal in terms of impact on the neighbouring amenity. Hence, recommendations being made. And in terms of the agent said regarding sort of amendments to the roof, those, yep, I suppose we could we could receive a further set of amended plans with a with a mono pitch roof rather than a hip roof if that was going to sort of overcome concerns about maintenance and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Right, I've seen councillor Josh Williams indicated.
Thank you, Chair. I just I don't have burningly strong opinions on this one, but I did want to ask a question, if I might, of officers. One of the concerns from the neighbour was an increase in noise and disturbance. And the answer from the applicant was there won't be any increase in noise and disturbance. This is just a storage area. Can the fact that it's just a storage area be conditioned? Or is that not something that's possible?
Do you want to respond to that? Richard?
Yes, thank you, Chair. councillor Williams, I would say we could condition it to be ancillary storage only. I I would just raise the point that it's a very small area indeed. And its its likelihood of being, you know, usable floor space is 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 pretty unlikely, would would be my only comment.
councillor Rowland?
Thank you. If I could, I'd like to ask a question to the officer too about and kind of following along from councillor Williams' request about any kind of conditions we could have in so far as use, the materials or the long-term sustainability of a glass structure there. So I'm just wanting to know what can be conditioned.
Well, I mean, in terms of materials, glazed structures, we obviously approve all the time for conservatories, that kind of thing. Some of them can have quite a long sort of timeframe. They can be there for 30, 40 years or or whatever. I think there was was the the related query about how much of the light would get taken by storage of materials within the sort of conservatory structure. That was part of your concern, wasn't it, councillor Rowland? That would be, I would say, impossible to condition. I'm just looking at our solicitor there, but I don't think we could put any condition on that would say you can't store boxes over this height within that area. It would just be it would just be unenforceable, I'd have thought.
Okay, councillor Rowland?
Chair, right. It sounds rather ridiculous, but but about the cleanliness. I mean, I can see, you're right, these things can last 30 or 40 years, and I can see green algae, you know, dirty, filthy. Yeah, I I mean, conditioning, cleaning is is this, these are very tight quarters and and obviously this is going to impact the neighbour. Is that possible to condition? It sounds quite ridiculous, really. I'm sorry to bother you about it.
Through through you, Chair. I I don't think it is possible. All 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 I would say is if you've got something that's a two-metre-long structure, I I would say you could clean that without going onto the onto the neighbour's land. So it wouldn't be very difficult to maintain it, single-storey only. You could you could get at it. The question is whether whether it would be done, but certainly I wouldn't think it's anything we could control. I'm sorry, no.
See, as I called this in, I'm a bit concerned, to say the least, that there's been yet more amendments to this. I know it's been going on for a long time, but it is substantially changed from the original application. And I would say there's been a lot of improvements to it. But there've been last-minute amendments today as well, which the neighbour hasn't been allowed hasn't been enabled, for whatever reason, to see. So I'm just wondering whether we should just defer it to have that absolutely clear. And we can then also have a better look at these pictures, which I think they're all a bit struggling to to quite get what they're about on the screen, and we can have a better look at it. How do people feel about that? councillor Emberson?
I wouldn't be sure about deferring it this evening. I I appreciate what you're trying to get at, but I don't hear any substantive objection from the committee in terms of I do appreciate the objectors' concerns about not having received the plans, but as she did say, it wouldn't fundamentally change her objection. She wouldn't withdraw the total objection. So I I'm not sure about deferring personally, but I don't know how the rest of the committee feels.
councillor Ennis?
Oh, I would actually agree with that. I was gonna I was gonna speak in favour. I I totally respect the neighbour and I think, you know, that they need to have their issues taken into consideration. But to be honest with you, I do know that shop. I think they provide a really good service for the area. Not that that matters in planning terms. I do believe that they'd be open to ensuring that the neighbour is viewed as taken into consideration because it's been going on a year. They've amended it many times. I would appeal to the agent, to to the shop, to dialogue with the neighbour. It passes it passes planning. That's the bit that I want to know, isn't it? Is, does it pass planning law? Does it pass planning regs? It does. It's been amended. I do think it's a shame that the neighbour didn't see it. But as councillor Emberson said, I think the neighbour probably wouldn't be happy. You know, I'm not putting it wrongly with the whole structure. I I would like us to continue if that's all right and and pass this. I'm certainly in favour of it. And asking for the for the for the agent to ensure that the shop dialogues with the neighbours and and keeps and keeps that going because it is a good business. We need to support business. And it passes planning regs, so therefore I shall be voting in favour of it. Unless it's deferred, of course, but that's what I want to do. Thank you.
councillor Stanford Beal?
Thank you, Chair. I feel that we should defer it. We've never had a meeting like this when it's been very difficult to get the public speakers into the room. We've never had a situation where we haven't been able to see the PowerPoints. It's very difficult to see what those photographs are supposed to be illustrating. And yet we've got, you know, more more changes to plan. So I think it'd be unfair on the on the objective if if we just passed it tonight. I think it needs to be deferred. Thank you.
Rowland?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to concur with councillor Emberson and councillor Ennis on this one. I think what we're actually looking at, I I do think it's regrettable that the neighbour has not seen this, but what I actually think we're looking at, provided the agent prevails on the owner, which we we know is a good guy, we want to protect business and everything also, which a lovely shop in a in a in the area. I think that they have come back in, they have moved the gutters inside the property line, inside the red line. And they have made what other modifications I believe that they can. And I think we need to go with a leap of faith. I mean, I've I've been able, I took a photograph of it, so I've been able to very clearly see exactly what what the photographs are here. And I think substantially, we're looking at something greatly better than than what they've got there, greatly improved. And I understand that it's also been improved. This is now, I guess, the third time or so that this has been improved. So I feel this is probably as good as it's going to get. The other agents made a case for the fact that they truly do need this space. And so I'm going to go along with my colleagues here and and recommend approval tonight.
Seeing anybody else, I'm getting the sense that, and in some extent, I agree with what's been said about would we get any more out of it? I just find it's very difficult to to deal with something when we get last-minute things come through that we haven't had a chance to look at properly. But I I hope that the agent will feed back to the shop owners that they need to really look after this, particularly the roof that you were talking about, councillor Rowland, and make sure that it is kept in in good order because what is there at the moment mustn't isn't a very nice outlook for the for the neighbours either. So on balance, having heard what people have got to say, I think we should decide it tonight. And then hopefully, there will be a dialogue between the shop owners and the neighbour about how they can ensure that they keep it in good order and keep it as clean as as possible. So can I? Yeah, so we shall. I think we've, well, councillor Ennis was proposing that we did agree. And I think councillor or councillor Challenger seconded it. So all those in favour of approving this tonight? All those against? Okay, that is carried. Thank you very much. It's quite a a long one, but it can see it's been quite a complicated, convoluted process and we needed to ask the questions. So thank you very much. Can we move on to the next item, item 10, which is 65 Kil Road, Emma Green? And I believe, let's see, the case officer has spoken, Connie Davis. We will ask the objectors and the agent to 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 have five minutes each. So over to you. ask the objectors and the agent to, to have five minutes each. So over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Planning permission is sought for the erection of a chalet bungalow in the rear garden of 65 Kilne Road. The proposal, by definition, is an example of tandem development, whereby the property would sit behind the existing dwelling on site and have no frontage to the road. This particular concern has raised a number of objections from neighbouring residents. Whilst comments from neighbours on this matter have been considered, officers would like to draw members' attention to paragraph 6.10 of the main report. Here it references a previous planning appeal decision for a new house that was also an example of tandem development. The appeal was assessed under the same planning policies as this current application. The planning inspector concluded that tandem development in itself is not a basis for resisting a proposal, but rather tandem development is only unacceptable and should be resisted if it results in a substantial level of harm to the character of the area or neighbouring amenity. Officers consider that, on balance, the proposal is acceptable in both of these respects, and therefore the scheme not refusable based on being in a tandem arrangement. The new dwelling would form an extension to existing development at Venetia Close, and would be in a somewhat similar position to these properties. The surrounding area is also mixed with properties having varied finishes and setbacks from the road, meaning that there is not a distinct uniform design or arrangement in the vicinity. The dwelling is also considered to be a substantial distance away from neighbouring properties on all elevations, so as not to result in a harmful level of light and, loss of light and privacy, or neighbours being exposed to unacceptable visual dominance. The proposal has also been assessed by transport, natural environment, and ecology officers, who have found the scheme acceptable from highways and biodiversity perspective, subject to conditions. Therefore, on balance, whilst the concerns of neighbours are recognised, there was not considered a robust enough case to warrant refusal of the application in the context of this particular site. The recommendation is therefore to grant permission, subject to conditions, and the completion of a section 106 legal agreement, to secure an affordable housing contribution. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we'll come on to public speaking now, and after that, our councillor, who's not a member of this committee, councillor Mitchell has asked to speak as well, and then we'll come back to committee members after that. So I believe we have Brenda Andrew, Graham Roberts, and Tony Champion here, on behalf of the residents. And are you all going to speak? And you understand you've got to share the five minutes between you. Do you want to come and sit at the? Would you like to introduce yourselves? I won't take that off the five minutes. And then?
Good evening. My name's Graham Roberts, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My home-
Hang on.
I'm sorry.
My name is Tony Champion, and I'm the owner of number 67 Kilne Road, which is next door.
I'm Brenda Andrew, and I've lived next door to the existing bungalow at number 65 for 34 years.
Thank you. So when you're ready, and Simon's going to indicate to me when the five minutes is nearly up. So I hope you've timed yourselves. I'll try not to interrupt you unless you're, look as though you're going to go beyond the five minutes. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. My home is in line with the proposed turning area. A pool, a haven for wildlife, and a fine mature walnut tree have already been destroyed. If approved, this development would destroy yet more habitat for a wild variety of wildlife. Reading has ample brownfield land for development. This greenfield site should be preserved. The design causes maximum distress to the maximum number of neighbours and would cause exceptional, exceptional harm. It's a tandem development. Planning officers say that this would not cause significant harm, but I strongly disagree. No well-designed development would have a long access road that is just four feet from two existing homes and just one foot from their paths and gardens. When turning, vehicles would vent their exhaust directly into my home from a distance of just four feet. We know that exhaust fumes are lethal. They cause death. My home should not be exposed to such lethal pollution. I have a lung complaint, and I don't want air pollution to feature on my death certificate. Planning officers say there would be too few traffic movements to cause a problem, but the frequency of such movements, including deliveries using diesel-powered vans, and the behaviour of their drivers, is of course unknown. The turning area is too small to accommodate large vehicles. If a vehicle lost control, it could result in serious injury or death to anyone standing outside my kitchen or in my garden. If approved, this application would have a very serious negative impact on the physical and mental wellbeing of my family, and I urge you to reject it. Thank you.
The planned access road is approximately-
So don't turn your mic on?
It is.
Is it?
Yes. The, is that okay? The, the planned access road is approximately 55 metres long. It goes from Kilne Road all the way to the house behind us, so along our garden borders and past the side of our house where our kitchen door and pathway is. At the point where the access road passes our house, it is narrowed, shown on the site plan, and all that will separate us from this road is our wooden fence. When we use our pathway, we'll be just over a foot from the access road, and we, where we sit in our garden is just inches from it. It is much too close, and will be unsafe, dangerous, and noisy, and it will be the only access for construction vehicles. The existing plentiful shrubbery will be removed, with nothing to replace it on our side. The exit from the access road onto Kilne Road will have very poor visibility, due to a hedge on one side and our fence on the other. The footway here is very narrow, and the other side of the road has a deep ditch and no footway. Visitors and delivery vehicles reversing on this long access towards Kilne Road will be a real danger to us and to our property, to drivers and to footway users. The traffic and weight of all the building materials so close to us is likely to cause serious damage, and once built, the access will result in a long, confined corridor, very close to our door, severely affecting our and neighbours' security. This is not community safety. Many trees, a large garden, and extensive shrubbery are to be replaced by this house, which is damaging for biodiversity. This will cause serious harm. I urge you to reject it. Thank you.
My principal concern with this development is the loss of sunlight in my back garden. And I doubt if any of you would like to lose what sunlight we do have. However, in, in my garden, I have a 30-foot swimming pool, along with a gas-fired, a gas heating system to keep it running. My concern is that sunlight contributes to the heating of the pool. It is important to understand that the pool has a solar heating blanket, and that can add up to 20% of heat required during the summer time.
Your time is very nearly up, so do you want to sum up?
I'm planning to install solar heating panels to the system to assist greatly my reliance on fossil fuel. The pool is well used by my family members, and on other occasions, used by local groups in the community, filling a need that would not otherwise exist. And my intention is to be running my pool entirely on-
Can I ask you to wind up now? Sorry, the phone is, is well gone now.
The pool has been in use now for 19 years. I do not want to lose this facility due to ever increasing costs of civil, fossil fuel. I would like to have it running on, sorry.
But if you all want to stay there, in case there are any questions from committee members, thank you very much for that. Anybody got questions? Councillor Stamford Beale.
Thank you. You said about your pool. At the moment, it's got a soda blanket on it, which helps with keeping the heat in. And you want to move over to soda panels. So will, so your idea there is just to reduce your carbon footprint off the pool, is that correct?
Exactly that.
Right. And you talked about some of the local groups. Have you got any sort of disabled children or disabled adults to come along and use it, or anything like that?
It's, it's a mix. I run a boys' brigade company for over 30 years, within the Caversham area. And on occasions, on special events, I invite them up, and they come up for a barbecue and a swim, and things like that. And neighbours occasionally pop round for swimming, but mainly family use.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Josh Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you all for coming in and speaking to us. I think that I understood from Brenda Andrew that you have significant concerns about the road that would be formed accessing the new property. And I think I wrote down that you said it would be unsafe and dangerous. Now, the, the report doesn't have those concerns. So would you, that we have in front of us, would you be able to expand on that a little bit, and explain to me why you think it would be unsafe and dangerous? Thank you.
Sorry. I am, as I explained, the pathway that is down the side of our house, which we obviously use for going to the bins, going out to the garden, et cetera, et cetera, and also where we sit at the back, that is only going to be a foot from this road. There's nothing going, there's no border shown as being the other side of that. So the cars are going to be literally just over a foot away from us. I, I'm very concerned. If I work in the garden border, I'm going to be right next to the fence. So, and when I sit at the back, I'm going to be inches from it. So I think I'm going to hear the vehicles, and I'm going to be concerned when one is going literally that far away from me down the road. Is that, is that okay? Is that answer it?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you very much for answering. Good, because I haven't been to see the site, Chair. What's the boundary treatment between you? Is that a thin wooden fence between your property and that potential new road?
Sorry, at the moment, do you mean?
Yeah. And what is it at the moment, and what will it be once the developments happen? Are you aware?
Well, at the moment, there's a fence, and there is extensive shrubbery, which is very deep, very high, and very thick, with lots of birds nesting in, et cetera. So, so it's, there is no access there at all at the moment, and there hasn't been for many, many years. So it's just garden at the moment.
And Councillor Emberson? Oh, Councillor Rowland next, and then Councillor Emberson, then Councillor Stamford Beale again. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Andrew, I'm, I'm confused, and if you could explain to me, the, the red line there that we're looking at, which is outlining the new proposal, is, and that, that road is the roadway that you're talking about, is that correct?
Yes, yes. That's it, I think, yes, the-
Is that, is that space currently used for cars to the property now?
No, the, it's, it's all garden at the moment.
Okay, you had just said garden. So, so where does the neighbour currently park an egress from their property?
Sorry, the, the neighbour's drive is the other side. It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's shown, the, the building's sort of in, in a sort of yellowy colour. There's the main house, and then that long building at the side is, is his garage. So he parks in front of that. So it's between 65 and 67, the current driveway.
Thank you.
Do you want me to point it out on there, or is that, no?
I get it.
I, I can see where you're talking about. Councillor Emberson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming tonight. I suppose it's really helpful to hear your concerns. And I just wondered, in, in terms of if there was ever anything feasible to be developed there, or whether you wholly oppose any development there, I'd just be interested. It sounds as though you would, based off your objections, but I just wondered whether there was anything in the design specifically that, you know, you felt could be changed to help in terms of your objections, or whether you're just wholly opposed to development on that site.
I am no planner. I'm no planning expert. I said that, as far as I'm concerned, the design causes the maximum distress and maximum inconvenience, and I stand by that. There is a very obvious amelioration that would go some way towards some of the objections, but others remain. The proposed house is at the back, it's in a garden, and that garden is essentially a wildlife sanctuary, and has been for decades. Many, many species inhabit it. We believe there's a couple of monkjack deers actually living in there, and certainly were fairly recently. So the design, I believe, is particularly bad, but even if it was ameliorated, I believe there would be still very significant objections to it.
Okay. Councillor Stamford Beale.
I just wanted to come back on the, the points you made about its garden at the moment. The last time I walked past it in the election campaign in May, I would say it looked very overgrown to me. It didn't really look like a properly neatly kept garden. And actually, where the access road is at the moment, there's a big telegraph pole in the middle, middle of it. So there's, you know, it's not to date been used for access to the plot. Is that correct?
Indeed it is. Whether it's a garden or an overgrown rubbish patch, I guess, is debatable. It is greenery, and it is certainly used by wildlife, and it is undoubtedly part of the owner of 65 Kilne Road's garden. Yes, indeed, there's a telegraph pole there. And yes, indeed, there is a hard standing for a car, that I believe was used once or twice, but never as an access. Is there anything you want to add, Brenda?
Yeah, sorry, I was going to say, not only is there a, there's a whole, where the access will go, there's currently a hawthorn tree, a lamppost, and a telegraph pole, which would all have to be moved if the access goes down there. I think that is in the report, that they will all have to be moved.
So, but you get privacy from it, because at the moment, it's, it's greenery, it's shrubbery. So that would give you greenery, whereas at the moment, the proposal is to put an access road down there. So they strip all of that out, and you'd just be down to a panel fence. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Right, thank you.
And then Councillor Ennis, you were indicating.
Thanks for your time, and thanks for coming along. It's a job to see that. I mean, I noticed that you can get Google Maps, and it would be great if we could have, I take it we can have Google Maps to, to see it rather than that. Because I'm struggling to see. The one bit I'm, I'm struggling with is 67 has something right at the end of it. Is that their garage? Is that, what is it? Is it a pool house? Is it a pool house? Okay. So there's no driving, the cars going along all them routes. I take it all the cars are in the front. There's no cars driving along at all. No. And that's a pool house, is it? Oh, you've got, yeah, I see. Okay, thank you. Still no one's wise, I bet. Thank you.
I could tell you that the, the little patch in the corner is the changing facility for my swimming pool, which houses a- for my swimming pool, which houses a shower and a toilet for kids, et cetera. Yes.
Okay. I'm not seeing any more hands. So thank you very much for coming and asking all the questions. And we'll move on to hear from the agent, Rosie Brace. Do you like to introduce yourself and then we'll start the five minutes after that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rosie Brace from ET Planning and I'm agent for this application. Okay. Thank you, Chair. As you've heard this evening, the proposal relates to a new family dwelling located at 65 Kiln Road, using an existing access. Throughout the course of the application's consideration, we have worked closely with the planning officer to identify matters of concern and have sought to ensure that the design of the new dwelling is in keeping with the character of the area whilst at the same time resolving all technical matters to result in a positive recommendation by the planning officer. My client and myself note the concerns from neighbours. However, I'd like to take this opportunity to reassure those neighbours that the new dwelling will not impact on their privacy or amenity. Properties along Russet Glade at the rear of the site are located in excess of 30 metres away from the application site, in excess of the recommended back-to-back distance of 20 metres located within policy CCA of the local plan. The planning officer has also confirmed that the proposal is considered acceptable in relation to immediate neighbouring properties along Kiln Road and also Venetia Close. All other matters that have been raised through the neighbour consultation have been addressed professionally and sensitively within the officer's report. The proposal makes a positive contribution to the character of the area by providing a layout that's comparable to other dwellings in the vicinity, with it being within the same building line of a similar scale and also by providing sufficient landscaping opportunities. The surrounding area is not uniform or overly distinct in terms of plot size and types of dwellings, and so this proposal provides an opportunity to provide an additional family house in this immediate area. Sufficient separation distances are maintained between the proposed dwelling and all neighbouring boundaries, so there'll be no loss of light or loss of privacy to neighbours, and it's not considered that the property is overbearing in its location. In terms of the proposal comprising tandem development, the planning officers helpfully identified the appeal decision for the new dwelling at Autumn Close in Ember Green, which was refused by members in November 2019 and which subsequently went to appeal. Within the appeal decision, as stated by the planning officer, the planning inspector stated that tandem development is not an in principle objectionable unless it causes identifiable harm. The inspector therefore confirms that not all tandem development can and should be resisted based on policy 11. Each case needs to be assessed on a case-by-case basis to assess the level of harm that would be created. In this particular case, given the plot size, building line and other examples of once backland development in Venetia Close, the planning officer has considered the proposal to be justifiable in relation to the varied surrounding context. The planning officer has also confirmed that there'd be insufficient harm to justify refusal on the basis of the proposal being tandem development. Based on the recent appeal decision at Autumn Close, this approach has already been and would be supported at appeal. The access to the property has been confirmed to meet the highway standards by the Reading Borough Council Transport Officer. Biodiversity enhancements are attached as a condition have been deemed acceptable in relation to policy EN 12 for the local plan. It's important to note there are no ecological designations on the site, and although it is currently overgrown, it is a residential garden and could be cleared. The applicant has agreed to pay the affordable contribution housing, contribution figure of £37,000 and is agreeable to any pre commencement conditions that are deemed appropriate. In summary, the proposals allow for a new family home, which Reading is in need of, whilst making effective use of land, which is in accordance with both local and national planning policy. The benefits of additional house therefore outweigh any of the perceived harm. I'd like to thank you all for listening and it's respectfully requested that your officer's recommendation be supported tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll see if there are any questions, if you want to stay there for a minute. Councillor Ennis and then councillor Robinson.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I just want to ask you, listening to the objectives, particularly about the car arrangements, the closeness to the fence, I don't think you mentioned that. I know you said it fits regs for transport, but I think it's important that you need to reassure the, the dwellers there about the closeness of cars going down. So the first question is, is how can you address that? The second one is, how, how many cars, what's, how many cars do you expect to be going up and down there in the journeys if you've done that calculation? And the closeness to, to the fence with the cars and the length? I think that's quite important that you address that.
I think it's important to note that, you know, it's quite a typical arrangement, this driveway along Kiln Road, and there are the other examples of this kind of access along the road. There would, you know, as you can see, there's two car parking spaces. Electrical vehicle, vehicle charging points are also indicated on the plans. You know, it's a single family house, you wouldn't expect a huge amount of movements day to day in the grand scheme of things. You know, it's, this is in a populated area. You know, it's in an area with a lot of housing. So, you know, the additional trips associated with one house aren't considered to be significant. I appreciate the concerns about the access road. However, I think in the update report that the planning officer said today, I think it's acceptable for fire engines to get up the access road. It's actually bigger in width than it technically needs to be. So I think, you know, as the highway officer has confirmed in their representation, it is an acceptable access to the, to the property.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. Following on from what you were just saying then about fire engines going up, would they have to reverse out or would there be sufficient room for them to turn and actually exit in a safe manner from the property? That's, that's the first question. The second one is, obviously, we understand that there was a former application placed for building a property on this land. And I understand that was withdrawn owing to the amount of objections that, that came through. Can I ask, as regards this application, what consultation has taken place with the neighbours to ease their concerns and discuss in that way, please?
And so in answer to your first question about the fire engine, I can't say off the top of my head whether there's enough room at the top for it to kind of go in and out without having to reverse down the access drive. But in an unfortunate case where a fire engine would actually have to access that property, I'm sure if it did have to reverse back onto Kiln Road, that, you know, there'd be ample people in position at that point to get it safely back out. But, you know, that's a very unlikely scenario. In terms of the withdrawn application, that was withdrawn primarily on design concerns from the planning officer. And that's why we went back to the drawing board and had the architect come up with a, a different design for the house that was, you know, a bit smaller and a bit more compact within the site, which was in part to allay some of the concerns that had been raised by residents. We didn't do any specific consultation with the residents, but that's not a required part for an application of this size. And, you know, that's, opportunity was taken through the neighbour consultation period for members of the public to, you know, voice their concerns and they have this evening. But, you know, the planning officer, I think in their report, she did a very good job at listing the concerns and, and stating how these had been, you know, overcome or, you know, didn't meet any enough harm to kind of warrant refusal. So I think that their concerns have been taken into account. But as we've heard from some of the technical consultees within the report, that these concerns have been overcome.
And I'm next, got councillor Emberson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd just like, if possible, to get some reassurance regarding biodiversity, because the main report refers to the applicant carrying out a report and low wildlife value being found. And there's obviously a biodiversity condition attached if this were to be granted this evening. But residents have come tonight and, you know, argued the opposite, that there is wildlife value. So I just would like to seek your comments in reassuring on that.
And so you are correct in that an ecology survey was submitted with the application. And, you know, it showed it to be of low value. It is a residential garden. It doesn't back on to kind of open land or open fields, open woodland or anything like that. Like I said in my, in my speech, it is obviously overgrown at the moment, which, you know, obviously gardens do have ecology value in that respect. However, there are biodiversity enhancements that have been attached as a condition if planning permission is granted tonight, including the introduction of another wildlife pond onto the site. I know neighbours have spoken about the, the pond. That was actually a swimming pool that just was kind of neglected and, and over time, you know, went into disrepair. But the applicant is willing to introduce a new wildlife pond on the site to actually make it, you know, have more ecological value to actually bring that going to the site rather than it remaining in this kind of overgrown disrepair that it currently is.
And councillor Stanford Beale, I think you're next.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to ask about the distance between the next door neighbour's house and the access road. Because from the original site plan that we were given, a block plan on page 50, it looked like there was a reasonable distance between the objectors' house. But if we look on this particular picture, it's, it's, it does look quite small. So, you know, can you just clarify how, how much distance there's going to be? Because obviously you don't want a situation where there's only a very narrow space and a wooden panel fence between where the neighbour's taking the bins out and vehicles coming down. Because there might not be many vehicles for a domestic house, but, you know, you can frequently get a car, you know, somebody going to work in the morning, the mother taking the children to school in the car, coming back with the car, going shopping, going out for coffee, going to the gym. So you can have multiple vehicle movements in a day along that access road, and it only takes one of them to accidentally go through the fence. I certainly don't want a fire engine going through that fence because they're about 14 and a half tonnes fully laden. So they would demolish it pretty quickly. So can you just clarify that situation, please?
I think the block plan is probably the kind of best representation of the distances between the proposed property and the, and the dwellings next door. I think this plan probably doesn't show it as, in the, in the best light. Yeah, there we go. I think that's probably the best, the best plan.
Sorry, could we see the next slide with the photograph?
Natalie, if you can hear us, can you move the slide on, please?
Thank you. So that does look that that house is pretty close to that fence.
Um, you know, I think that's, that's a fair thing to say. However, it is an access drive and it's been deemed by the highways officer to be an acceptable access to the property. You know, it's, although there'll be trips up and down the access, it is one family house and, and that's a kind of normal situation. And it's seen a few times along Kiln Road, this kind of access. And I think this is not an abnormal, this is not an abnormal access to a property in this specific area, I would say.
Can I ask members of the public to listen, please? We listened to you when you were speaking and we need to hear what the agents got to say. Thank you. I've got councillor Challenger next.
Thank you very much. I think some heckling from the members of the public answered one of my questions, but I will just double check that as well. So just two really quick questions. Obviously, we're talking about the subdivision of the land and you mentioned there is nearby subdivision on Venetia Road that was a recent planning approval. I also assume that 63 and 63A were subdivisions one, you know, sometime as well, being next to each other and sharing that. I was just wondering if that's something as well that you, that was considered, that subdivisions seem to be quite common on the Kiln Road earlier. And then, yeah, just about this access road, it is currently an access road. Whether it's used or not, is that correct? And it will remain an access road, but obviously with some alterations to it.
That is correct. I can't say I know the exact planning history of 63 and 63A Kiln Road, but by virtue of, you know, the name 63A, you'd expect there to be subdivision. From what I understand, the current occupier and his parents, who've been there for decades, were at once offered to sell off part of the garden when Venetia Close was built and they declined at that point. So, you know, this has been an evolving area over a number of years where these kind of developments take place. In terms of the access road, it is an existing access, which can be seen from the photos that we've seen before. You know, just because it hasn't been used or not commonly used in the recent past, that's not to say that it couldn't be put back into use. I think as it's detailed in the officer's report, that the applicant is willing to move the telegraph pole and things like that. So, you know, they're willing to kind of put the work in to kind of make it a usable access and a safe access.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Roland.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate you coming this evening. And could you possibly just address or speak a little more slowly about seven Russet Glade, which you mentioned, I think in your speech, about issues? We received a, an update pack today with a notification that seven Russet Glade felt that they're going to have three elevated bedroom windows pointing in the direction of their house and garden, which would, if built, would remove their right to privacy. So could you perhaps clarify that with me? And you read something out about it very quickly, but I know you were going at speed.
Of course, as you can see on the block plan that's up on the screen at the moment, seven Russet Glade is located to the rear of the site. The properties along Russet Glade are located in excess of 30 metres away from the proposed dwelling. Thank you. And that's in excess of the recommended back-to-back distance within policy CCA of the local plan, which recommends at least 20 metres. So that's another 10 metres on top. As you can see, you know, it's, the proposed property is of a typical scale and layout as other properties in the area. So, you know, you would expect that level of kind of amenity to be protected, as can be seen on the, on the plan.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. When you say that this design is, you know, in keeping with other, you know, properties in the area, you know, this is a really small garden when you look at it in comparison to other properties. And when you take into consideration, there would be a, a three by three pool pond as well. You know, that is not typical of, of other properties and other, you know, within the area. So just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
I think that you can obviously see on the, on the plan there that it's got a comparable garden size, I would say, to other properties at Venetia Close and also kind of just at the bottom of Kiln Road and also at the top of Russet Glade as well. I think there's ample room for kind of the normal activities that you'd expect in a residential garden, for example, drying of clothes, places to play, places to sit. I think there's ample room there for, to accommodate that kind of external manatee space you'd expect for a property of this size.
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody else indicating they have more questions. So thank you very much for answering so many questions. And I wonder if the planning of, oh no, we're sorry, I've nearly forgotten the ward councillor, Councillor Mitchell is going to speak as the ward councillor. And you don't, we don't get caught, just to remind people, we don't get to question here, but it's just a statement by, by the ward councillor. Thank you.
Indeed. Thank you, Chair. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the committee as one of the PEPARD Ward councillors on behalf of and in support of the residents of my ward, who you've obviously just heard speaking so passionately against this application. This is actually the second application, as you've heard already, for development at this site. The first was withdrawn. The current application, though, is very similar to the first. It is, as you've heard from the residents, an unsympathetic infill. In short, it represents an overdevelopment of a back garden with potentially very harmful consequences for its neighbours, the local wildlife and the environment. All of the immediate neighbours potentially impacted by the proposal have vigorously opposed both applications and continue to do so. It's also extremely disappointing that the application It's also extremely disappointing that the applicant has not discussed any aspect of the proposals with their neighbours. Neither have the neighbours' objections been addressed or accommodated in any way. It's also a great pity that you as a committee, you as members, were not given the opportunity to conduct a site visit ahead of the item being put on this evening's agenda. This is, quite simply, as officers accept in the report and earlier this evening, tandem development, precisely as defined and forbidden by policy H11 of the Reading 2019 local plan, which, it says, and I quote, "A proposal for a back garden should not lead to tandem development", which the plan categorically goes on to describe as a dwelling built behind another, the rear building having no frontage and being accessed by a private road rail track alongside the front building. That is the very definition of this particular application. Officers, however, are arguing that this fact alone is insufficient reason to reject the application because on its own, they believe there would be insufficient harm to justify refusal. I believe, on the contrary, that great harm would be caused by the development. The recommendation tonight also raises fundamental questions about the purpose of the local plan, if it is to be ignored, and whether its clearly defined provisions should be enforced. If they're not, frankly, what is the purpose of the local plan? Disregarding its provisions could also surely potentially expose the council itself to challenge if it doesn't follow its own rules. You've heard from the neighbours who are absolutely convinced that the development will cause very significant harm to their homes, to the local ecosystem, to their environment and to their physical and mental wellbeing and safety. Other neighbours indeed would have spoken this evening, but time constraints have prevented that. I believe the objections you've heard are entirely valid and in fully supporting them, I would simply reiterate. The proposed long access road and its exceptionally close proximity to existing homes is the focus of many of the objections. The access road would only be about a foot from pedestrians on the paths or in the gardens immediately beside it. The turning area would be too small to accommodate large vehicles. Reversing into Kiln Road would be exceptionally dangerous, given it's almost blind as you come out of it anyway, because of hedges and the posts we've heard about. Something would happen definitely if an emergency vehicle needed access to use the turning area or if it was blocked by other vehicles. Heavy vehicles will also be using the access road during any construction phase with similar risks to individuals and property. The exceptionally close proximity of the access road would also subject existing homes to unacceptable noise and pollution from vehicle exhaust. Again, as you've heard, the pool that's been there blocks any form of access usage as it has done for some years. I question why this access road has been chosen rather than any alternative that might cause less harm. The access road in exceptionally close proximity to the existing homes is a direct consequence of this being tandem development. Surely why tandem developments are so clearly prohibited by our own local plan. On the environmental aspect, at the very time that COP26, the UN climate change conference is happening in Glasgow, surely it would be perverse to allow a development that has the capacity to further destroy a wildlife habitat and subject neighbours' homes to noise, traffic pollution and danger. Already, the pool, you've heard discussed, that was frequented by wildlife and a mature walnut tree had been destroyed shortly before the planning application was submitted. Destruction, officers admit in the report, was merely regrettable. This has already damaged the local ecosystem, causing a net loss in biodiversity to the immediate area. Surely we must not increase this damage further. Additionally, the proposal would increase the fragmentation of blocks of gardens adversely affecting wildlife. Not least those protected species such as hedgehogs and amphibians such as pool frogs, which do move across the garden blocks regularly. This, too, is not permitted by the provisions of the local plan. The location of the proposed two-storey house, which would have three elevated windows to the north-west, also extends the line of Venetia Close by about ten metres. There would be no access from Venetia Close. It will be visible from houses in Venetia Close and Russet Glade. So the objecting residents argue it would be an eyesore and would destroy the privacy of neighbours' gardens. In conclusion, I'm entirely convinced by what the residents have told me and what officers say that this is tandem development, the approval of which, I believe, should be turned down this evening. It will cause great and sufficient harm to its neighbours, if approved, to wildlife and to the local environment. So I join with the objectors as the ward councillor this evening to urge you, the members of PAC, to refuse this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can I ask the case officer whether she's got anything to comment on from any of the speakers? And in particular, suggestion about the the local plan? Thank you.
Yes, thank you Chair. So a good few points were raised from the objectors and the agents. So I'm just going to briefly recap those and give my view. So first up, habitat loss and the loss of trees on site. As mentioned earlier, there seems to be a bit of disagreement about the ecological value of the site. An ecological report was submitted alongside the application and reviewed by our ecologist, who is a specialist and agrees with the conclusion of the report that the site provided a low ecological value and it was unlikely, unsuitable for a variety of animals. However, biodiversity enhancements have been proposed as part of the application to provide a biodiversity net gain, namely through the introduction of bird and bat boxes on site and the wildlife pool, which is considered a particularly positive addition. Next up, on to the access track and the associated concerns with that. Turning to the construction phase, if the development were to be allowed, there is a pre-commencement condition that would be included that would require the developer to submit a construction method statement to the council for formal review and approval. So we would have some control about how the construction takes place and to make sure it would be safe for neighbouring residents. As mentioned by Rosie, I agree that this is a scheme for one dwelling. And so the movements along the track would likely be comparable to other properties in the vicinity. The amount of fumes emitted and the noise from a single dwelling, I don't think is a reason to resist the application. Vehicles would also likely be travelling at low speed. So hopefully that would overcome concerns that residents have that there may be an incident with vehicles knocking into the fence, for example. We also discussed about the impact the development might have on number sixty-seven's pool and the solar blanket. This was mentioned in paragraph six point one seven of the main reports. Given that the solar blanket doesn't generate electricity for the main house itself, rather just keeping the pool's heat retained, it was considered to have more limited weight in the assessment of the application. The objector also noted that the pool is primarily used by family members rather than members of the public. So on balance, it's considered a residential pool rather than a business. And then lastly, going on to the local plan and the tandem development section of policy H11. I realise the wording of that sounds very objective and that all tandem developments should be resisted. However, in the report, we've noted an appeal decision in Emma Green a couple of years ago, where the inspector clarified that tandem development in itself is not a reason to resist the application, but only if it results in harm. I realise to some degree that might go against the exact wording of how it's written in policy H11, but that provides useful guidance for us as officers moving forward that not all tandem development in principle is not acceptable. It has to create some harm. And we are using that decision in the Reading Borough under this local plan to help justify this application. And it may also be used as a reasoning to justify other tandem developments in the future. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for that. I'm throwing now for councillor Ellis, you were indicating.
I was just going to comment that I thought councillor Mitchell's contribution was superb, but his interpretation of the local plan, I don't think anything would get built in Reading with the eco-development, at least to work on coal mine or an old field. You know, that is a problem even we've got with, you know, making a comment. But I do think the concern about the roadway and the harm and policy H11 with the vehicles and the postness are still, you know, want to get some reassurance on that. Is the highways feel it's safe, but what about the potential for harm? Now, you know, you can say the vehicles will be up and down in limited and slow space, but we would appreciate that he's quite close to that fence and it could be a number of vehicles with fumes of etc. So what was the view from the planning officers and the highway on that point? I think for me, that's the point that I'm taking back from this, from this issue, this planning application.
Do you want to deal with that?
I'm happy to come in Chair, answer the question.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So the development itself would generate a limited number of vehicular movements across a day period. On average, we'd be looking at around five vehicular movements a day. So not a huge amount and that would limit the number of two-way movements through the access road. The width of the access itself, as stated in the report, is between four point eight and five metres in width as you enter the property. That would be more than sufficient to accommodate two-way vehicular traffic, even with the fence there that would restrict some of that because of vehicles won't want to drive right up against the fence. So we've got some element of a safety zone, if you like, on that initial stretch. It does narrow down to three and a half metres as you run alongside number sixty-five, but that would still give you some element of a safety zone between the roadway and the fence. And then it does widen back out to, I think it's four point four metres roughly, or four and a half metres past that point. So that there's enough space there that vehicles won't be having to drive right up against the fence and then potentially come into conflict with it. So from a highways perspective, we're more than happy that it would meet the required standards and probably goes above and beyond what would be required to ensure that there wouldn't be any conflict with that fence.
Is that three and a half metres each way or is that just three and a half metres full? I suppose it's three and a half metres from sixty-five because sixty-five is the issue, isn't it? Let me see, sixty-three, sixty-three B or sixty-three A? I mean, that is a bit ironic, I do have to say. But, you know, with that with that distance, that is enough. And also fumes, have you addressed the issue about fumes as well? Because I know five vehicular journeys with fumes and that. I know there was one of the gentlemen was concerned about their health, which I thought was a really good point. Could you answer that if that's okay? Thank you.
In terms of the fumes, it wouldn't be something that I would look at specifically. Don't know, I guess it may be environmental protection that would look into something about that. But as I say, that the number of movements would be, you know, relatively low throughout the course of the day. So it wouldn't necessarily cause huge amounts, but obviously I'm kind of sensitive to the concerns of the residents that would be living adjacent to the proposed development.
Councillor Emerson, I think you're indicating next. Thank you. And then councillor Stamford Beale.
Thank you Chair. Just to be absolutely clear, you know, the proposal tonight is the erection of the dwelling. So I just wanted to query, obviously, we consider the access road holistically as part of the application and it's really important we do that. But I just wanted to be clear, if the applicant decided to drive, I know it's overgrown at the moment, but if they decided to drive down there now and park their car at their back, they're entitled to do that, am I right?
Essentially, yes, if they wanted to do that, yes. There are considerations with the amount of hard standing you can do on your property before you require planning permission. But this is to do with permeability and stuff, to do with driveways and hard standings. But essentially, yes, yes, they could if they wanted to, let's say, access a garage that they put in the rear part of the garden, which is a traditional arrangement, and it's possible, yes.
Can you just clarify this thing about the access road? So we know that it's between five metres and it narrows down to three points or something near the house. But you've looked at, Mr Cook, from a point of view of the getting from Kiln Road to the house in the back garden. You haven't looked at the distance between the garden fence and the next door neighbour's house and what the next door neighbour does with the land between the garden fence and the house, is that correct?
I'll just, can you ask the question again?
Right. So if you've looked at whether or not there is sufficient space, sufficient width to get from Kiln Road, which is opposite Clayfield Cops Nature Reserve, I might say, to get from there, the road into the back garden, you've looked at that width and you've said that width is satisfactory to get an ambulance down or an emergency services vehicle or a tipper truck, yeah? But have you inspected the distance between the neighbour's fence and the neighbour's house and looked at what they do with that passageway down between the house and the fence, which they're telling us is very narrow? And they have to access it to get the bins to the front of the property for the refuse collection?
I haven't inspected that and looked at that distance, but all I would need to, all I would be quite to do is look at, is there sufficient width within the development itself to facilitate the movement of the vehicles alongside that roadway? In some ways, it's no similar to any other proposal, although there is a fence there. In some ways, it's no different to if there was a footway there, take away the fence and you had a footway. It's similar in terms of providing the suitable width arrangement. And it's a straight road. If there was more bends within the road, there may be more potential or a potential for some form of conflict. But given that the straight nature of the road and the limited amount of two-way movements that would be through there, it's highly unlikely that any incident would actually occur along that access road.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Josh Williams.
Thank you very much Chair. Okay, I don't want to talk about the access bit, which is good, I think. First of all, it's great when ward councillors come in and talk to us. I think that should happen more, it's really good. So I don't want to say anything rude about that. But I did agree with a couple of points that were made. The first one was it does feel disappointing that a planning inspector's decision can effectively overrule an element of our local plan. But having said that that feels disappointing, I do understand the planning inspector's point, which was that we have to look at whether there's harm or a lack of harm and base our decisions on that. So whilst it's disappointing, the inspector's decision was understandable and I can understand why officers are now using that with applications coming forward. The, one of my concerns was that the ward councillor mentioned that we didn't get the opportunity for a site visit, but had any ward councillors requested it, I think we would have agreed to it because this feels like a site where I'd need to be there to understand whether there is harm or not in this development, especially because I feel that this difference between the local plan and the inspector's decision is something which is going to run and run and potentially be on other sites in Reading. So if ward councillors wish to propose a site visit, I would support that because without being there, I feel it's difficult to assess the level of harm for myself. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson.
I was going to actually say exactly the same myself, councillor. I think, you know, given that this is a highly controversial application, you know, I think it would be you know, I think it would be probably for the best to actually defer, do a site visit so that, you know, councillors can actually understand the viewpoints, you know, the issues with the privacy that's been mentioned on Seven Russell Lane and also taking a closer look at that driveway or the proposed driveway. So if I may, if I may, Madam Chair, could we ask for a deferral for a site visit for this application, please?
I think it would have been helpful if we'd had that request some time ago, rather than if we've had the very lengthy discussion. But if there's a real push for, and I can see people nodding, then, you know, it's always better to go and look if there is any doubt about something, I think. So councillor Ennis, you seem to be agreeing.
I do, I do. I mean, I wasn't being rude to the local councillor, by the way. I just was trying to, I wanted to interpret what, you know, bullfrogs and hedgehogs, I think is really important. But this is planning and I still can't get my head around. I apologise for talking about the access road because I think for me, that for me is, and I would welcome a deferment to go out and have a look personally. I certainly would have called for that if that was in my area and I'd have done it earlier. So yes, so to be transparent, I think I'd welcome propose a deferment to go out and have a look at it.
Members, sorry, can I just be clear that a planning inspector's decision doesn't overwrite the policies in our local plan? It might be seen as persuasive or, you know, a factor that can be taken into consideration. But it does not overwrite or override the policies in the local plan.
Councillor Ennis.
Equally, I think it's important that appeals do hang over this council. And therefore, national planning law is a major rider. We've got a good local plan that we fight hard to keep. But ultimately, sometimes, you know, the issue about inspectors and what passes as law and what passes as regs is a major issue for us to think about. So I hear what you're saying, but equally, you know, we have to look at that and take that into consideration, the question of appeals and whether or not it's regs or whether or not it passes. So I hear you, but at the same time, I think it's important that we hear that.
But equally, you can ignore that decision, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think we understand that, thank you. And I've had a proposal from councillor Robinson that we defer for a site visit. I think that was probably seconded by a number of people around the room. So can I see all those in favour of a deferral for a site visit?
This is accompanied, I don't, yeah.
Those against? Right, we're going to defer it for a site visit, but I think it's, sorry, councillor Challenger.
Sorry, through the chair, can I just get some clarity on what happens now after the site visit for when this application comes back in terms of where we leave it ahead of a decision? In terms of public speaking, councillors speaking, et cetera? Could we just have some clarity on that? Thank you.
Well, I think I can answer that. We don't, once we've heard from members of the public and as a result of what they've said tonight, people have said it would be better if we went and looked at this in person. But next time, we will be going straight into a discussion with the committee because we don't have people coming back speaking for a second time. So I think that's clear, isn't it? Yes. That answers the question, yeah? Okay, so we are deferring for a site visit and I assume it will be on the same day as the other one we talked about earlier in Minster Ward.
We will try and do that for the 25th then, yes.
So you'll need to get yourselves from Minster to Emma Green and back again, so. I hope enough people will turn up as well, so that as many people as possible can actually go and have a look at this. Thank you and thank you to members of the public for your input this evening. Right, we're moving.
Break, is that all right? I'll be one minute.
We've only got two very short items, but all right, a one-minute break. Very quickly, please, and I shall start again. Right, I'm going to start again. We're moving on now to item 11, which is the six-circuit lane application. And I believe David Brett's going to introduce this, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The proposed development is for a single-storey side extension. The proposal site has been identified by Reading Borough Council Property Services as a suitable dwelling for a single-storey side extension providing accessible accommodation for a disabled tenant. In design terms, the width of the proposed side extension in relation to the main house means the proposed extension is not entirely in line with policy H9 of the Reading Borough local plan. And guidance on side extensions within the Design Guide to House Extensions, SPD, in achieving a wholly proportional or subservient design. It is considered, however, that the proposed side extension will appear as if it were a converted garage or similar to an extension constructed under permitted development criteria. Therefore, in this specific context, given the justification for the design decisions, the proposed side extension is found on balance to be acceptable. Any design shortfalls when assessed against policy H9 are outweighed by the wider inherent benefits of the development. No objections have been received in response to the public consultation. The officer recommendation is therefore to grant planning permission, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ennis, were you indicating? John, can you put your?
Oh, sorry. Forgetting that, all right. That's my local area. And the question I want to ask is about the accessing and ingress, whatever you call it, into it with the grass verges. We've, I've got no problems with the actual thing. Great to see again, support for another council house in Southcote, much-needed family home, that really is. The issue I've got is the grass verge access and, you know, access into a driveway. We've had a number of applications, one particular one I've got, which I can share outside, which is just around the corner from a disabled person. Because this is discussing about disabilities. And their planning application for access over a grass verge was dismissed because it's cutting out green land and space. And, okay, this one, I've seen the photographs and I can't, and I know it, I know it. I can't see where that's any different. So the question I ask is, are we going to do this for this? But are we saying this for this only? Or are we going to have a common policy that if we do it for this, we do it for all? But taking into consideration, we've actually turned down planning applications for, I believe, similar access routes over green spaces. And therefore, I would like that to be dealt with. I mean, you know, I'm sounding like a real anti-planner, that maybe we could look at deferring this to have a look at that and to get a policy or a decision on that. Because for me, them photographs and what I know about circuit is that it's cutting out as much green space as the planning applications that have happened. And I think it's quite important, not just for Southcote or that little road, but generally in Reading, we would need a consistent policy on building driveways over green spaces, particularly for disabilities, because people who were turned down were disabled. And we were quite surprised they did get turned down. I think it went to appeal and lost. And yet we're going to agree this. And I don't want to stop a great idea of a council house. But I think we do need to get our policy consistent and right about access over green space. So I would, I'd like to call for a deferment so we can get that right, if possible, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Emberson, you were indicating?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. As you know, I will abstain on this item as the housing lead. And, you know, welcome any applications that come forward to enhance the life of our tenants. But I just wanted to query about soakaways because it's something I know officers have used in planning applications before in terms of flood risk. And that's not referred to, and I appreciate it's a small patch of grass being taken out. But I believe Circuit Lane was flooded in 2014. So that was just not mentioned. So I just wanted to seek reassurance on that for the committee. But, you know, noting councillor Ennis's concerns as well, I think it's really important that we're consistent and, you know, with our own applications as we are with other homeowners or landlords or anyone who puts in an application. So it'd just be helpful to get reassurance on what the policy is and that this application meets that. And then just some understanding on the soakaway position and if that's been looked at.
Thank you, not seeing anybody else. And I'd take that as a proposal and I'm happy to second councillor Ennis because we do need to get this right. And I don't, I don't want to delay either. Obviously, there's a great need for this conversion to or extension to give somebody a better quality of life. But hopefully, we could get some answers to that in time for next month's meeting. And it may lead to further work elsewhere, to be so that we are, as a council, being very clear about what the policy around this is. Because I think, I can see people nodding, I know other councillors have also had similar issues where one's turned down and one's not. And then you, you know, so I think having a clear thing that the public can understand is going to be really important around this. Councillor Lang, I don't want to particularly prolong this tonight. I think we might need to have a discussion elsewhere about how the policy is in fact working in practice and having that clarity for residents. Okay, so can we all agree to, oh, can I see those in favour of deferring this till next time? Thank you very much. Which takes us on to the item that was deferred last month is unit B4 on Walton Drive. And it's, Natalie Weeks is going to introduce this, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The application is for a change of use from B8 Storage and Distribution to a mixture of B8 and B2 General Industry to provide maintenance and diagnostic repairs on commercial vehicles on the Walton Grange industrial estate. It was deferred from the last PAC meeting due to the need for additional transport information. An update was provided, providing details of amended plan PL006 Rev B, Possible Vehicle Arrangement Plan, which was received on the 2nd of November, following which additional information relating to onsite vehicle movements was also requested by the transport team. As a verbal update, I apologise for the changes, but I confirm that today two additional revised plans have been submitted this afternoon. A swept path analysis for a 16.5 metre vehicle and a swept path analysis for a 10 metre FTA rigid vehicle to be approved plans. Transport have confirmed that these plans address previous concerns raised and that they are acceptable. As such, the proposal is considered acceptable within the context of national and local planning policies, subject to conditions to satisfy health, environmental health and transport teams. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lang?
Yeah, as ward councillor, thank you for your presentation. As ward councillor, I'd like to support this project. I'd like to welcome Master Tech to Whitley, if successful. It provides jobs for the area. I also would like to just note that it will increase traffic slightly. So that would obviously help us as ward councillors push for a zebra crossing or pedestrian crossing on Imperial Way. Bit of a frown there from the Chair for raising that point. And that's about it, really, it's been a long night, so I'll be brief. Thank you.
Thank you, not seeing anybody else. Are we happy, can I see all words in favour of the recommendation to grant? Thank you very much, that's it.